Fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm Jeff Benton, Vice President of the Board this year, pinch hitting for Barb Lewis, who is not here today. And to my right is fellow Commissioner Barry Merrill. We have Eric Coestetler and Dawn Houston are Deputy Administrators. Randy Wilson is also without her cohort, Jen, this morning, so Randy is going to run the meeting, and we can begin.
Item number one, resolution number two-five dash five zero eight, in the matter of approving the electronic record of the proceedings from regular meeting held July seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash five zero eight. Mrs. Lewis is absent today. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. Item number three is resolution number two-five dash five zero nine, in the matter of approving purchase orders, then announce certificates and payment of warrants and badge numbers, CM APR zero seven one one.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash five zero nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Item number four, resolution number two-five dash five one zero, in the matter of approving a county's compensation agreement with the City of Sunbury relating to the Woodland Lake tax increment financing.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Eric Coestetler, Deputy County Administrator and General Counsel. If you recall, City of Sunbury had provided notice of incentive district, TIF, for Woodland Lake development, and that provided an opportunity for the county to provide an objection, which we did, and we negotiated this agreement with the City of Sunbury to resolve that objection. What we've secured through this agreement is just Sunbury's obligation to spend the proceeds of the service payments on the public infrastructure improvements that would be similar to the agreement we have with Sunbury for surrounding area. So there's no actual compensation coming to the county, it's just we'll waive that compensation. The funds will be used for the extension of Four Winds Drive, Sunbury Parkway, and then related facilities to those improvements. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I don't believe they have any questions. I assume we monitor, they'll monitor to make sure that it is in fact done that way.
Yeah, I mean, the City of Sunbury's legislation dictates that that's how it would be used.
Yeah, again, just kind of an overall comment, this funding will provide the source of funding partially for the infrastructure related to the second interchange at seventy-one and thirty-six, now Sunbury Parkway as well. And very important area, very important that we get this second interchange in place. The construction on it starts next month, I think, maybe even this month. It's been bid out, we're having a groundbreaking on Wilson Road later this month. And again, very important project for a whole bunch of reasons, it'll allow economic development in that broader area and continue to fund, you know, the improvements very much needed, the second interchange, which will provide economic development as well as traffic easing and alternative access to seventy-one, which is very important. So, okay, with all that said, I will ask for a vote, please, Randy?
Vote on motion two-five dash five one zero. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five one one, resolution of acceptance of donated property for the use of the county sheriff or his employees.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
That's okay. Dave Wiseman, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. What's in front of you is from the Delaware Area Career Center, they've suspended their police academy, and at that time they had some ammunition left over, and they had a company holding it for them, and so they want to donate it to us so we could use it.
Okay, appreciate the donation. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five dash five one one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five one two, in the matter of approving a services agreement between the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, and Vertra Inc. for subscription training and equipment partnership.
So move.
Second, discussion.
This is a training simulator of the Sheriff's Office. We currently have one in place, this is a second contract we're going into. This will also allow us to relocate it out of the substation at twenty-three and Orange and move it to the new training facility so we can have it in place up there, and that's what this contract is for, for a new three-year contract with Vertra.
And I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I believe there's some course of money that, grant money as well, is that correct?
I'm not sure if there's course of money that goes into that. I know if we do training course, it does pay us back for some things, but I'm not sure.
But will you look into it?
Yeah, yeah, we have course, we have some other stuff with course.
I know there's some money out there, but I'm not sure how much it is and how it's allocated.
Yes.
Right, right. Yep, okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five dash five one two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
Resolution number two-five dash five one three, in the matter of declaring county personal property not needed for public use and authorizing the sale of the personal property to Sergeant Darren Carbler on the occasion of his retirement.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Scadon with Delaware County Sheriff's Office. I wanted to say a few words about Darren. He's not here today, but he will be retiring here the thirty-first. Deputy Sheriff Sergeant Darren Carbler will retire on July thirty-first after twenty-five years of service to the Delaware County Sheriff's Office, which started on May twenty-third of two thousand, after he had been a Sunbury Police Department Officer for five years. Sergeant Carbler grew up in Delaware County and graduated from Big Walnut High School. Darren has served in several areas throughout his career, serving as a patrol deputy, a detective, a sergeant in patrol, court services, and the Drug Task Force. During his career, he's also served on the Southern Ohio Fugitive Task Force, Homeland Security Investigations Task Force, and was also a member of the Delaware Tactical Unit, joining it in nineteen ninety-seven and serving through two thousand twenty-three, several years on the tactical team. He was a team leader for several years. His last assignment is leading the Delaware County Drug Task Force. He's been there for five years. Darren attended hundreds of trainings throughout his career and taught many that involved special weapons and tactics. He currently serves on the Board of the Ohio Tactical Officers Association, and he has also attended and graduated from the Police Executive Leadership College and the Public Safety Leadership Academy. Darren will be missed not only for his dedication, but for his integrity he brought to the profession and to every aspect of his life, which serves as an example to others. On behalf of Sheriff Balzer and the entire Delaware County Sheriff's Office, I thank Darren for his dedication, service to our country and our community, and wish him continued good health and happiness in his retirement.
Great.
I don't really have anything to add of wishing him well in retirement, and sorry I couldn't be here today to personally tell him that.
I think he's actually out working. Drug Task Force is very busy.
I know we've had several retirements, and we've got more planned, and again, the quality of the people who are retiring, the twenty-five years Darren spent with the team is outstanding, and so we appreciate that and thank Darren and wish him the best, and sorry, like Commissioner Merrill said, sorry you couldn't be here this morning for us, thank you in person.
Well, thank you.
All right. Vote, please, Randy?
Vote on motion two-five dash five one three. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thanks, Chief.
Resolution number two-five dash five one four, in the matter of approving an update to the computer use and cybersecurity policy within the Delaware County Personnel Policy Manual to include a provision governing the use of artificial intelligence.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator. This update to the Personnel Policy Manual has been a group effort with Auditor Kaitza, Steve Lewis, our IT Director, and Eric Coestetler, General Counsel. The agreement, or I'm sorry, the policy will update the Personnel Policy Manual to add artificial intelligence. And as we know, AI can be a useful tool in our work. However, we need to make sure that we have some parameters surrounding the use of AI to make sure that we do not have anything that will jeopardize the county's network, and that any of our employees that are using AI have permission ahead of time to make sure that that use is what we can ensure is protecting the county's network. So I don't know if Eric or Steve have any other items that they want to indicate?
I'd be interested in just kind of a brief overview of the changes, the additions to the policy, the changes, maybe Eric.
Currently, the policy doesn't have any reference to artificial intelligence systems, so what the update adds that to the existing computer use policy, primarily focused on utilizing AI with county sensitive information, and that's defined in the policy as to what sensitive information means. So somebody using, you know, an AI search function through a web browser would not be covered by this policy. We're talking about actually utilizing AI uploading or inputting sensitive information, and that's what the policy addresses. You need to have written approval, it would be subject to audit, you have to maintain all records for that use. It's, right now, I consider this to be a placeholder while we are continuing to evaluate a full, robust AI policy that would cover all aspects.
Right, right. I know at our last CCA winter conference last December, the AI impact was very much a hot topic because it's so broad, it's so significant, that it really needs to be addressed, and good to see everyone working on this to address it. And keep the county safe, make its use in a positive way, like you said.
Just to be made known to all the employees that would have a potential use, to make sure everybody understands the rules. The, I was at a course of meeting in the spring that this has potential for good, it has potential for bad. They had a speaker speak, and he spoke in English, and then they had him speaking in a couple of foreign languages, Japanese, and I can't recall the third. Two of them were not real. It's amazing how real it looks and how, how much good or bad can be done, and of course, we have the Minority Speaker of the House getting criticized over the weekend because of some AI that he's leaning against the bench, it was obviously fabricated, and so it has a lot of good uses, but it also can be bad, used if you print correctly. So I think it's great that we're out in front of this, and there's going to be a lot more to be said and done in the future.
Yeah, so it's good, good that we're leading on this and getting out in front of it. I know there will be more changes to come as we learn more and develop more policy. But again, thank you all for working on it. Dawn, you have something else?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Okay. Steve, you want to weigh in, or you good? All right, thanks. Vote, please, Randy?
Vote on motion two-five dash five one four. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five one five, in the matter of approving the agreement by and between Document Technology Systems, LTD, and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Delaware County Recorder for software maintenance for the Delaware County Recorder.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Hello, Melissa Jordan, Delaware County Recorder. Nice to see everybody. I wanted to give you a little update on the prior system migration with our new vendor that you approved earlier this year, and the backscanning project that will put us in compliance with SB ninety-four by mid-next year, that we're then going to seek funds from the state grant money that they had set aside. We talked about that earlier. So what's before you here, though, is the system maintenance agreement for the next year under that new conversion. We are already working on having data converted in cooperation with our prior vendor. We're cleaning up kind of redundancies. We're going to make the search faster and easier to retrieve. It will be a cleaner search for people. The backscanning project, we're working on the last section of our first big batch coming up next week, and then we'll start moving to a new document type. So we're already getting in compliance with these SB ninety-four requirements now under those prior agreements that you approved, so I appreciate that. This system maintenance agreement is moving away from the per-document fee that we were operating under for the prior ten years or so, and it's just going to be a flat fee every year. And so this is just a one-time fee for the next year, so mid-next year we'll be back doing the same thing, but they're in agreement that that's not going to change. That's going to be a static number, at least for the foreseeable future. There's a schedule attached to the agreement. Is there, are there any questions?
We're, I'm guessing we're kind of out in front on setting this up compared to some of the other counties?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Are we kind of out in front on setting this up compared to some of the other counties in the state?
Yeah, we're ahead.
My understanding, my impression.
Yes, we're working, there were some that were ahead because they might be smaller counties, and they might be able to do some of that stuff during the workday because they don't have as much workload, so they can have staff kind of backscanning along with recording. We're too busy for that. Of the larger counties, we're on, we're on one of the front ends of getting this done ahead of time, so, and the GSA also.
Okay, well, thanks for taking care of this.
Sure.
I know it's an important transition.
All right.
Randy, vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five dash five one five. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two-five dash five one six, in the matter of approving the services agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Civic Uplift LLC for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Administration Services and General Grant Consulting and Administration Services.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Avi, Director of Finance. This request would authorize a service agreement with Civic Uplift, and this vendor was recently selected through a competitive RFP process.
So they're going to be doing the, we talked about the CD, CDBG grant administration as well as some other grants that-
Correct, yep, correct.
Good, because I know there's, there's a lot of grants out there that we're going to pursue. Okay, vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five dash five one six. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Resolution number two-five dash five one seven, in the matter of accepting improvements within the project known as Greenery Residential for Road Improvements to Shanahan Road.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. The Greenery is a rental community, a new rental community in Berlin Township on the north side of Shanahan Road. As part of that work, they did some work within the public right-of-way of Shanahan Road. That work is complete, and so we've inspected that and find it to be acceptable and recommending accepting that work and releasing the construction bond.
Okay, discussion, vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five dash five one seven. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five one eight, in the matter of approving an owner's agreement for DEL Web North Star Section One Phase A and DEL Web North Star Section One Phase B.
So move.
Second, discussion.
So as you may know, DEL Web, this is the first community that I'm aware of in Delaware County or even central Ohio of this magnitude. The, at Build Out, I believe this DEL Web project will be over five hundred lots, or five hundred homes in the North Star development. So this is a rather large first section. There's about a hundred and fifty-plus homes in this first section. I know Polte Group is working to move ahead quickly on this. So this is, again, our standard owner's agreement for the street and public drainage improvements, and we are recommending approval on this.
Okay, questions, comments, vote?
Vote on motion two-five dash five one eight. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five one nine, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So move.
Second, discussion.
So you have four right-of-way permits. These are all pretty typical utility installation permits. If I could take just a very brief moment, I know your office has received some, some correspondence from residents, particularly in Liberty Township, asking about some of the fiber builds that are going through Liberty Township. I know some of the residents have expressed frustration at the quality of the installation, the timeliness of some of that work, and maybe the lack of notice that they received or have not received, I should say, from the installers. I want to be clear, I think our, I totally appreciate, and I think I understand many of those, some of that frustration. I think if I were in, or any of us were in their, those folks' shoes, we would feel the same way. As you know, our authority as a county is somewhat limited with regard to what we permit for public utilities. We certainly have the right to permit, and we routinely do, just as you are now, work within the public right-of-way. On these particular fiber builds, I would say the vast majority of the work is outside the public right-of-way. It is in platted private utilities. And that, the portion of the work within the public right-of-way is generally limited to road boards or drilling conduits under the public streets. For that portion, we permit. I will say that work has been fine. We really have no basis of complaining or objecting about that portion of the work. I understand some of the folks that are seeing new telephone pedestals or pool boxes in their front yard outside the public right-of-way may perceive there'd be some county ability to regulate that work. What I can tell you is there really is none that I'm aware of, and I'll let your counsel chime in if he'd like, but I think we're, we've gotten quite a few, I'll say complaints, or at least inquiries about the work. I appreciate being plugged in. We have made contact with some of the installers and their designated contacts at AT&amp;T, Alta Fiber are two of the ones more recently we've been contacted about. I think they're aware of some of the situation happening, but I think this is a matter that really has to be resolved between the property owners and the utilities directly. So wanted to offer that, if you have any direction for us, I'm glad to relay any information your board would like, but I think that's the position we're approaching this from.
I was going to bring this up in my comments, but I think appropriate time is to do it now. We've, I think there's some misunderstanding about what our role in all of this is, and Eric, can I speak briefly, and I think Eric has some information he wants to share with us?
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Riley has said in terms of the county's legal authority to do anything about work outside of the public right-of-way. But I do think that, you know, the Commissioner's Office has an obligation to make sure that we do everything that we possibly can, and so I think maybe getting a, getting a group together of citizens who have contacted us to learn more about what their concerns are, this is certainly something that, that we as the county could lead any improvements to the regulatory process or even legislative change if, if that would be part of the solution here. But as it stands right now, I think it'd be good to explain to everybody that what, when they're saying that the county approved this, what that actually means. And I think part of the confusion also has been, the county is currently doing fiber optic projects in the county, but they're not in Liberty Township. Those are projects in the northern parts of the county, being done by different vendors, not by AT&amp;T, and I think there was one other utility that we'd been contacted about. So maybe some misinformation is out there that we could correct, but reaching out to the folks who have contacted us would be a good thing, in my opinion, and then seeing what we can do, if anything, to improve the problems that they're experiencing. And I can talk with county administrator about what that might look like, but with the board's blessing, I think we can maybe put something together, even a, even a community meeting at some point to, you know, let everybody come in if they need to vent to somebody. It's fine if that's me or some representative from our office to hear what those concerns are, and then we can see what we can maybe do about it.
Eric, I applaud the fact that you're willing to do that, and after you talked to Tracy, I think that, I think there's some misunderstanding, misinformation, and I understand when it's affecting you personally, sometimes you, there's a tendency to act without maybe not having all the facts. So thank you very much for taking the lead on that, appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't think any of us here are going to defend the, the work that a public, public utility or their contractor might do, and if we were the property owner facing that, I'm sure that we would be angry just as much as they are.
Right, right. That sounds like a good idea. Again, we're all hearing about it, and anything we can do, I think we should try to do, but again, we're pretty limited in, in our response. But, and again, the, it really does sound like the subcontractors are just not doing a good job and not working with the residents, and that's where the point of friction appears to be, so hopefully we can, we can help in some way.
And I will add this. I spoke to Rob Friday, Julie Montino called because of location, I think she said box, I'm not sure exactly what that means, other than my vision of a box, but I called her this morning to see if, because she just wanted to name, she was very, very nice, very polite, and she just wanted to name somebody with AT&amp;T to call, so I called this morning for this meeting, and coincidentally, she was on the phone with AT&amp;T, so we couldn't talk. I don't know if it was a positive discussion or negative, but I will make an effort to call her later today, but thank you for reaching out and providing that, and I hope that it was a good result in her mind as well. But she was very positive in her approach, just wanted to name someone she could talk to, to try to find some resolution.
Good. Okay, anything else? Do we vote on that already?
We have to vote.
So we're done. Okay, next item, then?
Vote on motion two-five dash five one nine. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thank you.
Resolution number two-five dash five two zero, in the matter of authorizing the county to enter into the Regional Council of Governments for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement establishing the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging as a regional council of governments, and approving the bylaws of the Regional Council of Governments for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging.
So move.
Second, discussion. Eric, if you want to cover this or not, I, I'm involved in this a lot.
This is a, the follow-up to the discussion we had last week when the representative from the CO AAA came in and kind of explained what the transition was that they were wanting to pursue, and this particular resolution will authorize entering into the Regional Council of Governments, authorize the approval of the agreement and the bylaws that go along with that. I've reviewed the contract, I've reviewed the bylaws. I don't have any concerns with the most recent drafts, but the resolution would authorize the President of the Board to make any, you know, non-substantive changes that might be necessary once we have a final form of the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have about the contract or the bylaws.
Yeah, Commissioner Merrill wasn't here last Monday when they went through the presentation. In the meantime, you've been updated, at least partially on-
Bob Horoff, actually, prior to that, the first I knew about it, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend last Monday, but understand that it was well explained, and you have a lot of firsthand knowledge because you were involved in it.
Yeah, I was one of the co-chairs of the Transition Committee, and I'm, I agree with, with our counsel. There is virtually no legal exposure, virtually no definitive financial exposure that we can't control. And again, just a real brief background, this organization was created in nineteen, I think nineteen seventy-five, and back then, they split up the state into twelve agencies, twelve districts, and this is the Central Ohio District, CO AAA, to handle the older Americans disability, or the Americans Act funding, I forget the exact title of it, but in the beginning, they were maybe ten employees initially, and it was just established as part of the Columbus City Parks and Recreation Department, and since then, it's grown to four hundred people and is not, this doesn't fit with the City of Columbus. They want to move out into this regional, this newly-formed Regional Council of Governments, and I think everybody agrees, City of Columbus agrees, everybody agrees, that makes a lot more sense. But we did need to be careful, we did our due diligence. Eric was a big help in that, just to make sure that we weren't taking on a big financial responsibility or legal risk, and we are not. So I'm comfortable that the structure, the new structure will better serve the CO AAA and the clients that they serve.
And assumption is all the counties involved in our area will, are buying into it?
Yes. Two counties, I got an update Friday, two counties have already voted to join the Archog. We would be the third. There will be eight counties total, and all they needed really was two to get it, to get to move forward with the creation of it. But what, they've got a very tight timeline because they want to transition January first of two thousand twenty-six, and there's all kinds of issues that need to be addressed. You know, they're in a Columbus, City of Columbus facility. There's HR, there's technology, there's- there's HR, there's technology, there's, um, marketing, there's, uh, payroll, I mean, there's all sorts of issues that need to be handled, and that's why they're trying to move it quickly, and, um, so that we would be the third, and, um, that's, that's where we are. So this would enable the ARCOG to continue to, to move forward. Now, the next item is, is important as well, the next item on the agenda is to name our representative to the council. There, there's two structures, there's the council, and then there's a Board of Directors underneath the council. The council has one, one member from each county, and it is the one who creates the chair, the vice chair, secretary treasurer, or names those, those people, and then the Board of Directors is, I think, twenty-three, twenty-five, uh, people, and it's, it's, uh, each county appoints a number of members based on their population, and our population, uh, gives us three. Franklin County is largest, as you would expect, and I think, um, Licking has two or three, and there's several others, and then coupled with one, so there's twenty-three or twenty-five, whatever the number is, and that's what we can do subsequent to this one. Uh, but the next motion is to name our member to the bigger council, who will then appoint the chair who can act on behalf of the council. So, anyway, sorry to, to ramble, but the item immediately in front of us is to, uh, become a member, and Brandy, if you could read the vote, please, do a vote?
Vote on motion two five dash five two zero, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash five two one in the matter of appointing the county's member representative to the council of the Regional Council of Governments for the Central Ohio Area Agent, Agency on Aging.
Do we, do we have to name? Do we need to?
Well, and that's, um, I was gonna, what, what, again, kinda hate to get into weeds too much, but, um, what I've been asked to do is appoint William Murdock as an interim, uh, member for us, um, because, um, Morpsy, um, well, we, we have to, they have to get this thing going, and they don't have time, there are no other counties to vote between now and July twenty-fifth, I think, when they have to file some paperwork at the state to get the ARCOG started, and so to do that, they have to have a chair and a, or president, vice president, secretary.
So this resolution...
I'm screwing this up, Eric, probably.
Yeah, this, this resolution is to name the member representative to the council.
Right.
And that person, uh, per the agreement, needs to be a member of the Board of County Commissioners, an officer of the county chosen by the board, or an appointee of such officer chosen by the board. The role that we've been asked to appoint Mr. Murdock to is one of the directors, and so that would be at the meeting.
Oh, it's not the council?
It's not the council.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the council.
That was the question that I asked last week and that, um, Mr. Garrity clarified, is that they're not asking us to use our one council representative seat for Mr. Murdock, and he would be one of the county's directors, which the, this member representative appoints at the initial, um, organizational meeting for the ARCOG.
Okay.
So that's, it is confusing, and it's apparently statutory, I'm not familiar with ARCOGs, um, and how they're actually structured, but that's...
So, does, does it make sense for Commissioner Benton to be that representative since he's already actively involved, or should we be looking for someone else?
It's my understanding that we could, we could change our member representative at any point, so if, if Commissioner Benton is able to go to the council meeting and appoint somebody, then it could be him, um, otherwise it needs to be an officer of the county chosen by the board, um, or an appointee of such officer chosen by the board, but that, that is not the people who are to serve on the Board of Directors, and it's not, you, the chair and the vice chair, any officer positions are selected from that Board of Directors, and that's what they want, Mr. Murdock to serve as the initial chair, he would be appointed at the meeting by the council representative.
Oh, okay, okay, I misunderstood, again, this is a very fluid...
So would it make sense to, I mean, this is, we're kind of, if we're putting this on the fly, but it would, it may seem to make sense for you to be that appointee that ob- obviously can be changed at a later date, correct, Eric?
Right.
That's right.
Uh, because you're the one that has the knowledge.
When is the meeting?
I don't think it's been scheduled yet.
I, I, based on the correspondence from last week, I thought they were trying to schedule it this week.
Well, uh, they want to schedule it very quickly, but I don't think it's actually been scheduled.
Okay.
Because they need to meet that, I think it's July twenty-fifth.
We just need to make sure that our representative can actually be at the meeting, that's the most important part, so without, without knowing what the, when the meeting is going to be scheduled, it's difficult to say who that person should be.
Should we de- delay this until we have more information, or should we?
My concern is that if they want to meet later this week...
Yeah, then we won't have another meeting.
Yeah, there's not another meeting until next Monday.
Could, could I be named that person and, and, or my designee? And that way, if, if I can't make it, then, then I could appoint someone?
The way that the agreement is written, I'm not sure that if you name a board member, one of the commissioners, as that, uh, member representative, that they can designate somebody. The way that it reads is that an officer of the county chosen by the board may appoint somebody, so, again, I don't represent this council.
Right.
Um, their legal counsel who drafted it and will be advising the council on how to proceed is not here to answer these questions.
So let me summarize what I think I've heard here, so it would appear to me, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, Commissioner Benton, we need to identify somebody, preferably has some knowledge of what's going on, we can change that designee at a later date.
Correct.
But it'd be good to have somebody that, uh, knowledgeable at this point in time that, and to me, there's only one logical representative for Commissioner Benton, so, uh, I'm going to suggest that we, uh, add Commissioner Benton's name to that, and with understanding it can be changed at a later date, that accurate?
Yeah, that, that's fine with me, I mean, Eric, and if I can't...
And we can have a discussion about what your actions would be at that meeting as the council representative, but again, I'm assuming that the actual council of government, legal representative, will also be there at the meeting.
I would hope.
But we can at least be clear on what, if you have to attend this meeting, what your role would be in appointing those Board of Directors, because that's really the, the most important piece for that member representative at the initial meeting.
Yeah, and we have, uh, Mr. Bob Borax, who we all know, um, has raised a hand, said he'd be glad to serve on that board as one of our representatives, and I, I would certainly support that, but we'll, we don't have...
That's a different discussion.
Right, we don't have, we don't have, right. And I've got a couple of names in mind that...
Yeah, we have been asked, uh, by the organization to use one of our Board of Director appointments temporarily to appoint William Murdock.
Right.
Because the timing in which they want to schedule this initial meeting is before Morpsy can vote to join.
Right.
Um, Morpsy as a, as a non-county entity would be entitled to one, uh, appointee to the Board of Directors.
And that'd be a temporary appointment just, uh, until there's a vote?
By Morpsy to join, and then they would appoint Mr. Murdock, and he would...
Then we'd replace him.
And we would replace him with somebody else.
Yeah.
Because we have three members that we can appoint to the Board of Directors.
Right.
So would you read the resolution with Commissioner Benton's name attached?
Yes. Resolution number two five dash five two one in the matter of appointing Commissioner Jeff Benton to the county's, as the county's member representative to the council of the Regional Council of Governments for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging.
So move.
Second, any further discussion? Uh, vote reading?
Vote on motion two five dash five two one, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash five two two in the matter of acknowledging the withdrawal of the annexation petition filed on June third, twenty twenty-five by agent for the petitioner, Michael R. Shade, attorney-at-law, requesting annexation of one seven-five-point-eight-zero acres of land in Delaware Township and one seven-five-point-zero acres of land in Troy Township for a total of three-five-zero-point-eight-zero acres to the city of Delaware.
So move.
Second, discussion?
I think this is a second withdrawal, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, this, the first one's more of a technical, this one is more of a, we're going to regroup and, and discuss with the city what, what sort of annexation and project makes sense, so this, this is more macro level, uh, withdrawal, and then, then re- reconfigure it, so, um, go ahead, Brandy, vote?
Vote on motion two five dash five two two, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
And that brings us to administrator reports.
Okay. Dawn?
I do have one item, Commissioners, um, again, Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, you may have seen in, um, the media over the weekend about Anthem and Ohio Health...
In addition, we got letters in the mail as well.
Yes.
I called you on Saturday, you didn't answer, you probably didn't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You probably didn't close the mail, I wanted to get more information.
I missed your call, um, so, anyway, uh, they are, Ohio Health is notifying, uh, all of the, their patients, um, so I was contacted by, um, a few of our employees over the weekend just asking questions about what was happening. Um, you probably remember Anthem and OSU were in similar contract negotiations a few months ago, um, they did work things out, um, it's my understanding that Ohio Health is asking for a twenty-seven percent increase, um, in their network fee structure, um, so I'm guessing that it will probably all be worked out in the end, um, maybe at the eleventh hour, but, um, Ohio Health is required to notify their patients, which they have done, and I'm sure that there will be more to come, um, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we are aware, and there's really not a lot that we can do, um, as a county, and I don't believe SEPCO has a, a lot of, um, ability to enter into those, uh, negotiations either, but, um, it is being worked on, and we do believe that things will work out in the end. Um, if for, uh, chance that they are not, um, employees and their dependents can still go to Ohio Health facilities, but they would be considered non-network. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
No, that, that's a good point, they, they would be, there's, they still can use Ohio Health, but it's out of network, which increases the financial cost to, to the patient.
Well, if there's a twenty-seven percent increase, it's ultimately when we renegotiate, or rates are going to be affected with that as well, so...
Sure, sure.
Uh, the example I used over the weekend was, this is not much different than when the networks and the cable end up disagreeing, and they end up, uh, going down to the last hour, figure something out, so hopefully, uh, a more reasonable number can be found, and we'll get this behind us, but I understand, uh, some employees were upset, were concerned, and, uh, thank you, my wife, when she read it, she was concerned.
Yes.
Uh, I think she got her letter on Thursday, so, uh, anyway.
Yeah, potentially big impact, no, no doubt about it, um, but like Dawn said, this is very routine, this happens rarely in negotiations between providers and insurers, um, and vast majority of the time, it works out, it may be at the eleventh hour, fifty-nine minute, but, um, they, they generally do work out, and I know SEPCO's aware of it, I'm going to keep monitoring them, you know, their, their reporting and see how it goes, and keep everyone up to date. So, anything else, Dawn?
No, that's all I have.
Eric?
Nothing.
Commissioner Merrill?
Uh, the thing that I was going to bring up was the Lakes of Silver Leaf, uh, but that seemed like the right opportunity to do when, uh, Rob spoke regarding the topic, so I have nothing else.
Okay, yeah, I just had a couple of other things, the Homeport project, um, we got our picture taken out in front of the, uh, on the courthouse lawn here, the historic courthouse lawn, we got, um, our partnership with Homeport to redevelop the, uh, county engineer's property, um, is, is, is going along very well, there've been a lot of partners in that project, and the land bank played a role, the county, the city, uh, Homeport obviously was the key leader on it, uh, it is moving forward, they're very excited, I think it's going to really help, uh, provide more housing, um, and, uh, help the east side, so, good, good news in a lot of different ways, and I guess it's going to be on the cover of Columbus CEO magazine, is what I heard. Jane, do you know anything about that? Is it going to be on the cover of Columbus CEO magazine, do you know? The picture, the Homeport project picture we had taken Friday? Don't know?
With the demo business first, huh?
Uh, something, yeah.
Regardless, whoever's taking the photo.
Yeah, it's good, it's good, good, uh, good recognition for Delaware County, and again, all the partners that were working hard to provide housing of, of all, all types, um, in, in our community.
If I can get your jacket before you do next, uh, I drove by there about three weeks ago, I'm taking my detour to get out to Vicksby to avoid the traffic, and all the singular buildings, they were all, they were all gone, and Leah, who's the director of Homeport, said that, uh, much of the main building has now been taken down, and I didn't know how much, but some, some portions come down, and the rest will come down soon, so they're, they're making progress.
Yeah, it's great, it's good, good to see. Just also wanted to just congratulate our EMS, uh, department on their certificate of provisional organizational accreditation from, um, the, the Commission on Accreditation for Pre-Hospital Continuing Education. Um, they've, they're, they're recognized for having met all requirements for awarding CAPC, Accreditation for EMS Continuing Education Activities. Congratulations to Director Fischel and his team, they do a great job, and this is another national award that they've received, so, uh, keep up the good work, and we do need executive session, we need to have a executive session.
Resolution number two five dash five two three in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of pending or imminent litigation.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two five dash five two three, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive...